Meeting of Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Uh, I'd ask Howard Tipton to lead us in the invocation and then to pledge allegiance if everyone would please rise.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, this morning we begin with grateful hearts as we say a special, special prayer for our commissioners and all who bear appropriate responsibilities. We pray for wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, the ability to work in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. We are reminded that public service isn't easy, but few things worthwhile ever are. For the agenda set for today, we ask that our words and our actions reflect the best that is in each of us and pray that all decisions benefit our neighbors who call this place our community home. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like now to open it up for public comment, anything that's not on public hearing items. Would anybody like to speak during public comment? Seeing no one, we have a couple of proclamations this morning. The first one will be the Saint Lucy Infrastructure Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report, and that'll be presented by Mark Satterley, our Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Mark Satterley, Deputy County Administrator. Here just to kind of kick off our annual presentation of from the uh, uh, infrastructure surtax citizens advisory committee. Every year the committee meets many times and we, we go through all of the projects that the county is working on that we talked about doing way back in twenty eighteen when the half penny sales tax was, was adopted. This is the third year, the third presentation. So, uh, with, with me today is Carolyn Neemstek from the Chair of the Board, along with Mr. Lyons, um, Mr. Kroll. Jane Rowley, I think, has left the committee. Gail Pike is here this morning. Roland Dozenvil, I don't believe is here this morning, and I don't see his DJ here. And then Mike Monahan, is Mike, Mike here this morning? Anyway, they, it's, it's a great committee. Um, they're very supportive of staff and, and the work that we do. And I believe Carolyn is going to come up and, and, and speak with you as well as Ms. Pike has, has some words she'd like to share. And then, and then Selena Griffith from our, uh, Public Works and Engineering Department is going to provide the presentation that, that we do to kind of re- review the year, the year and, uh, in the, in the projects that we've done with the half penny. I will also tell you that Ms. Griffith is, is leaving us. She's going over to the city of Fort Pierce. She's been a great asset to our team. We're sorry to see her leave. But she's done a great job, um, running our CIP program, so we're, we're sorry to see her go. She's, she's done a great job and she'll be a great asset at the city of Fort Pierce and obviously we'll continue to work together as we always do with the city. With that, I will turn it over to, to, to Ms. Neemstek, who is the Chair of the Committee.
While you're walking up to the dais or to the podium there, I want to just thank each and every one of you. When we passed this, the most important thing was to be transparent and assure the citizens that we were going to do what we said we did. So, on behalf of the whole board, thank you all very much. Go ahead.
Oh, good morning. I was going to say to start, if you're like me, you won't believe that we've been doing this for three years. I mean, it seems like just yesterday, everyone was running around trying to get the, the bill passed. And now we've completed three years of diligent service, my committee and I. Our annual report confirms that despite the impacts of COVID nineteen, the third year surtax proceeds were available to the county, the committee, and we found the following. The money was spent consistent with board approval of Saint Lucy County Infrastructure Sales Tax Refer- referendum, consistent with the ballot language and the ordinance, consistent with the section of Florida statutes. We said that, we met at least quarterly for three years, and we're very impressed with what the county has achieved. Gil?
We're going to present this morning a letter to you, and this is a letter that's heartfelt from those of us that have served the past three years. The Infrastructure Surtax Citizens Oversight Committee has met diligently over the past three years with county employee representatives to provide citizen input to Saint Lucy County's sales tax projects within the county. After concerned discussion, we would like to make a request. The Saint Lucy County Infrastructure Surtax Citizens Oversight Committee members, who are county employees, are understaffed. We have remained on target with our commitment to better roads, more sidewalks, and cleaner water. However, with federal infrastructure monies now available, as well as our five cent surtax, we need more personnel. We need a designated person to communicate our successes in the community, and we need additional project managers to work on multi-projects as our county is growing. Our committee sees the attrition within our ranks, and it's now time to have more personnel to meet this committee's needs. Please think about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pike.
Okay, anybody want to say that that's our report?
That's our report.
Well, again, thank you for your hard work. It really means a lot to us in the community. Would anybody else like to say anything?
We're just very proud to represent the county and the citizens of, uh, across the board, Fort Pierce, Fort Saint Lucy. It was a, it was a huge effort by all of us, uh, but most importantly, the citizens and taxpayers. They are the clear winners, uh, in this project issue. So, uh, I'm waiting to hear what the market says on the actual report.
Well, and, and Selena is going to make a presentation that, that kind of gives a summary of some of the great projects that, that we've got done this year. And, you know, per the direction of the Board, you know, you've been asking us to accelerate those projects. So, we are, we'll be having the conversation in the upcoming budget sessions about, you know, how we're, how we, how we, you know, what we need to get all that done.
Thank you very much, Mark. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I, um, going to present to you the Infrastructure Sales Tax Annual Report. Fiscal year, this is the report for fiscal year from October one, twenty twenty through September thirty, twenty twenty-one.
Echo, echo.
Over the course of this fiscal year, there were three committee meetings held, one in February, one in May, and one in September. And the most exciting news, well, there's a lot of exciting news, but the revenues over the last year increased over and above our anticipated levels. We ended up collecting about two million dollars more this year in sales tax revenue than we did in the previous year. So, the actual revenues for this year totaled, uh, eleven point six million. That just means that there's more projects we can do. So, the, um, this is focusing on road and bridge, the projects completed, uh, resurfacing projects, our Easy Street Southeast, Estivo Court, Gordy Road, Midway Road, Glades Cut Off Road, and we did do the Orange Avenue Guard Rail. They also, um, were able to purchase some traffic signal cabinets to upgrade the system and, and, uh, cameras for, uh, traffic monitoring. They have some projects underway, Glades Cut Off Road resurfacing continues, Orange Avenue resurfacing will be starting, and the Midway Road resurfacing and guard rail is underway. And, uh, Traffic Signals hopes to do the Midway Road video detection upgrades. For engineering, we were able to complete the Gordy Road Bridge Replacement. I believe we are working on the ribbon cutting ceremony to be scheduled sometime in the near future. We were also able to complete the Floyd Johnston Road Culvert. This was an emergency culvert failure, and we needed to get it, get it fixed. So, we, we were able to do that. King's Highway Fiber, um, we have coordinated with the FDOT project from, um, Okeechobee up to, I guess it's Pecos or a little bit north of there, or ninety-five orange. That project, we're, we're installing fiber conduit. Later we'll be able to install the fiber when that conduit is complete. And we have started the Oleander Avenue sidewalk from Midway Road to South Market Avenue. Those, um, that one is also a tap grant from, from FDOT. We have projects that are, I know that, one, you're really waiting on.
Just a little bit.
Edwards Road is, is on the list. It's in the foreseeable future. We've gotten some things, um, resolved with FEC, and, and we hope to start that one, um, in May. You may see construction activity in May this year. Midway Road at twenty-two, uh, Canal twenty-two, Salvage Road at one oh-two, Johnston Road at seventeen, and the Orange Avenue Culverts way out west are all ready to be advertised. So, we're just, we're going to move those forward. You're going to see those go pretty quickly. In fact, Midway has already been advertised. Um, we're just working on finalizing that contract. We are working on design for Johnston Road at one and fifteen. That should be coming back to you all, uh, soon for some guidance. Johnston at sixteen is underway. The Keen Road Bridge over Taylor Creek is, um, in design. Old Dixie Highway Bridge over Taylor Creek is in design. Bell Avenue Sidewalk is a, again, another FDOT tap grant, and the Indian River Estates Phase Three project. All of these are in design. Water Quality was able to complete the, uh, one part of the Lakewood Park stormwater improvements. So, they were able to complete the Amokalee Road Canal at Fort Pierce Farms, Canal Five. The picture on the far right is that canal. It's huge. Some huge box culverts. And, um, they've also been able to complete Harmony Heights Phase One North. They're working on the Melville Road, uh, Phases, Projects One and Two. I think one is nearly complete and two is underway. Uh, but the photos here show how that, that stormwater, um, goes through the, through the pond and, and allows for a lot of the nutrients to, to, um, settle out. And that would be the highlights of our annual report. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions from the Board?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment. Selena, you are going to be sorely missed, um, in your reports, not just once a year, but I think you give them to us consistently throughout the year when we have questions on them. So, thank you for your hard work. Thank you to all of staff in all the different departments that have worked so hard on a lot of these projects. They have already started making huge improvements with the completion of just in the past three years of a lot of these. But I'll go just, I can't help but say the Edwards Road one can't come soon enough. That we started with that one, and I know it's not our fault. It's been at the mercy of some of the permitting requirements that we're required to do with the different agencies and so forth. But it's long awaited and much anticipated just by the motorists themselves. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I don't think anybody will miss the orange barrels on Edwards Road. Mr. Chair, uh, members of the Board, uh, you know, you can see that we've been, that long list of projects that we came up with back in twenty eighteen. We've been, we've been steadily rolling through that and, and actually beginning to accelerate it a little bit. And I think, you know, we just have a lot of transition in the, in the, in the engineering department right now. So, we're, but we're, we're, we're bringing, we're working on bringing on additional staff, and we'll be talking about that in the budget session. But as we roll through all those projects, you know, we're starting to get towards the end of the list. So, we'll be meeting with the committee, you know, in the coming months and talking about, you know, sort of the next, the next list of projects that we will be bringing, bringing to you all, um, as we, as we get all of this work done. And it feels really good to be catching up and getting off of that seventy-five-year repaving schedule. Also, just real quick, um, the culvert at Pecos Road, I, and I know people are wondering what's, what's happening there. And just, you know, for the public, you know, that was an enormous culvert. That was up over a hundred inches. And they just, they don't have those laying around on the shelf. But I believe Dan's Ralek and, uh, the Public Works Staff has, has, has found a pipe. We're actually coordinating with the contractor that's working on King's Highway. So, I think they are going to, they are going to do that work for us. We're waiting for that, that pipe to arrive, hopefully by the end of this month or early next month. And so, we can get that, get that work underway and get Pecos Road back open. So, we'll give you further updates. Also, we'll be coming to you at an informal meeting, um, on the Culvert Assistance Program. We've done maybe a dozen in that program, so we kind of understand how it works. And so, I think we can start advertising it and promoting it a lot more now that, now that it's, uh, now that we've, you know, kind of rolling on how, how that's system works.
Well, thank you for that update, Mark. And Selena, I saw you Saturday, and you didn't say a word. You were leaving.
So, as they're leaving, I want to also thank the, um, the Citizens Committee. That was such a big part of our presentation to the public to let them know that we were going to have public oversight. Very, very important. And I'm not going to go through it all, Selena. I am going to ditto Commissioner Hutchinson's comments and just let you know that you are going to be sorely missed. So, thank you for everything you've done up to this point.
Any other comments from the Board?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Satterley. Next up, one of my favorite not, not-for-profits, the Boys and Girls Club of Saint Lucy County, Pillars of Success. Today we will, uh, listen to Mr. Will Armstead, and he's got a famous doctor with him. He's got Matt Church with him. He's got Tommy John with him. He rolled all the big heavy hitters in. Good morning, Will.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
County Commission and Mr. Tipton and your staff. Uh, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you, uh, for, uh, just being, being available to not just Boys and Girls Clubs, but for our youth throughout the community. We know that youth are struggling, and they're going to be our future. So, the work that you all are doing, um, and I know we get to sit at the table as a Boys and Girls Clubs with a lot of your staff working on things throughout the community, and it's, it's, it's nice to be able to be a part of the table. And we just, you know, every six months or so, we like to be able to come by and just really share with you what we have going on. And, um, it's been remarkable just because of the partnerships that we have with you all. And I don't know how to use this, so I'm going to figure this thing out real quick here. All right, here we go. So, we're, we're very excited about our partnerships, uh, just throughout the community. And really, our collaborations allow us to do so many things, a lot of shared resources. A lot of us nonprofits are working together in a space that we've never done. And, and in some, in some cases, it's very uncomfortable, but we're doing it and we're working together, and we've seen great successes because of it. When you look at our community in Saint Lucy County, it's a very diverse community. And with that means that there's a lot of opinion, a lot of options for growth. And we're seeing that even within our agency at the Boys and Girls Clubs, that our younger staff and older staff will work together collaboratively to make sure that we're coming up with the best outcomes for our youth and our teens. This, uh, particular, uh, artist put this together because we wanted to show the community simply, and maybe it's because I'm kind of simple-minded in this way, is what do we actually do in Boys and Girls Clubs? And I know that Dr. Legakis is going to go through it a little bit more in detail, but this signifies what Boys and Girls Clubs is about. Number one, safety is our priority. No matter what goes on, we're going to make sure our kids are in a safe, uh, environment. But as you look through all of the, uh, individual pieces that we do, that is what we do to make sure that our kids are ready for the future. We are, we are broken down in three pillars, and, and first and foremost, I couldn't do this without our Board of Directors. And each of our Board of Directors have taken on a piece of the pillar to make sure, ensure that I was to make sure, ensure that I was following what we said we would do in our community. And so Dr. Legakis is going to work through each one of those pillars just so it's a little bit more in-depth and even share some success stories that we've had over the, the last couple of years.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'd like to start with pillar one, world-class clubs. We have the privilege of serving youth in seven clubhouses and 15 school-based clubs in Fort Pierce and Port St. Lucie. We are in the process of branding our clubhouses so that when you walk into a clubhouse, you know it's a Boys and Girls Club. With this said, in the next couple of years, we look forward to the development of our largest teen center that will be located on Avenue Q and 25th Street. This teen center will include a six-hole golf course in partnership with First Steve. More importantly, the teen center will house a comprehensive workforce readiness program, preparing teens for the future workforce skills to serve our communities in Port St. Lucie and Fort Pierce. Since our first priority is to provide a safe nurturing environment for our youth, the teen center will also provide a separate and appropriate space for our tweens and teens. Pillar two, life-enriching programs. Important to providing a world-class club experience for our youth, I would be remiss if I did not share our life-enriching programs. In partnership with the city of Port St. Lucie, our mobile club and a bus will begin in the near future, serving youth attending our Saturday programs. Members will have opportunities to participate in virtual reality, academic support, and physical fitness, along with having a hearty lunch. To support the quality of our programs, our newest department, Continuous Quality Improvement, will work with club staff to ensure that youth are receiving programs in a safe and positive learning environment. Our Whole Health Child Programs focus on emotional, mental, nutritional, physical, and academic components in an environment where every child or youth have a sense of belonging and are received with a warm welcome every day. Boys and Girls Clubs is fortunate to be working with our local colleges and universities in addition to offering programs through Emory Riddle and Kaiser University. Likewise, our year-long Youth of the Year Program allows youth to work with local businesses, academia, and city and county officials. Pillar three. Finally, our Workforce Readiness Program not only aligns with Boys and Girls Clubs of America's standards, but also provides our youth with myriad opportunities. With our new food program, youth have a chance to serve over 400 children lunch daily. Additionally, teens work in various Boys and Girls Clubs departments, such as finance, HR, resource development, along with learning administration duties. Youth learn effective written and oral communication skills, soft skills in addition to technical skills, working as interns with local businesses. Just as important, youth are growing their emotional intelligence through socially emotional learning-inspired programs. For us, it's not enough to help youth get jobs. It's just as important to help them sustain employment. Teaching conflict management and resolution, self-awareness, and managing emotions is critical to their success. Business partners like EDC, Career Source, local businesses, and the cities of Port St. Lucie and Fort Pierce help to make our Workforce Readiness Program successful for our youth. Our Continuous Quality Improvement Department supports Boys and Girls Clubs departments in everything we do. We are driven by effective leadership, not crisis. Input from all levels of staff and stakeholders, teamwork, continuous review of progress, and of course, accountability. We do this because we know that it improves staff morale, enhances information management, provides data-driven decisions, and allows creative and innovative solutions in all departments of the organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I, I just want to just share some, some quick facts of how long we've been here. Boys and Girls Clubs has been around since 1994. As Dr. Legakis has stated, that we're at 15 school locations. We have over 4,700 registered members. We have 167-plus youth development staff. And we were awarded Best Place to Work in 2020 and 2021 because we know without staff, we can't get our job done. And so we really appreciate being able to present in front of you. We want to continue to do what we're doing and work. I do want to add to the Workforce Readiness Program. There are young people that work with us that want to be commissioners. They want to be mayors. They want to be doctors. They want to be attorneys. And so we want to be able to give them those opportunities. We're very appreciative of being able to work with Howard Tipton and his staff so that these kids get opportunities to be able to be in front of some of those very like people they want to be. So thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Will, on behalf of all of us, thank you. I've seen what you've done to, in this community, especially the last two years during COVID with the feeding families and things of that nature. We've had some fun. We didn't burn too many burgers.
No.
And it's been a real pleasure. And I thank you on behalf of all of us. Great work. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Shout out to Tommy John.
Mr. Chair, I would also, also share, you know, we've, we've got the investment with the Summer for Success Program coming up again this summer with Allegheny Franciscan Ministries. 130 or so kids from across the county having the chance to, to work in this building and, and other buildings and, and to have that experience. So it's just one of the many ways that I think we're working together to, to, to look out for the youth.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton, for sharing that. Again, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I may just ask the board to indulge us for maybe a five-minute break. Commissioner Townsend is not able to hear us currently. And if, if I can just have five minutes, we're either going to say we can fix it or we're going to have to just move on and, and she's not going to be able to participate. But if we could just, before we get to anything that's a voting matter, I'd just like to see if we can rectify that.
It's 9:37. We'll reconvene at 9:50.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Moving right along.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
May I pull 8C1 just for an update for the board, please?
8C1?
Yes, it involves the Harbor Point. Mr. Tipton, could you give the board an update as to where we are at this time with Fort, the city of Fort Pierce and our agreement for the boat ramp there? And it's one we discussed with them at our joint meeting.
So the, the Fisherman's Wharf item, as, as the board is aware, it was a project, it's actually a city boat ramp, but the county undertook the project to renovate it. It, the, the work has been done. It was actually completed, I think, prior to Memorial Day of last year. It's, it was roughly about $700,000 that was invested in it. It is a combination of county resources as well as a, a fine grant that we received. And so the, the way that it relates to this particular agenda item is that when we talk about Harbor Point, one of the pieces of, of the design is that there would be a boat ramp there as well on Taylor Creek. The city, as you know, is, is, has gone through an RFQ or RFP process to redevelop the, the current Fisherman's Wharf boat ramp as well as some additional properties in, in that immediate area. And if that were to happen and that boat ramp goes away, then there's a, a problem with the investment that the county has made, both, both the county's dollars as well as the fine dollars. And so we are working with the city to see how we can be reimbursed for the monies that have been spent. And have the developer, if they do in fact sell that, that property to a developer, then that developer would, would ultimately reimburse, hopefully the city, who has reimbursed us previously. And, and so everybody's there. And then we would turn around and, and take that money and then, and invest that in Harbor Point. It's not going to be enough to cover the cost of a new boat ramp because the, the boat ramp itself was a rehab of an existing facility, which is going to be less expensive than building new. And so, and we would like to, I think, even have a more expanded boating facility. As we all know, we have one shortage in this community. It's, it's boat ramps and, and boat parking spaces. And so we would like to actually have a, an expanded facility at Harbor Point. And so we have this actually agended for the February 8th in formal. And so in conversations with the city even today, trying to make sure that we have an update for you for February 8th. This particular agenda item is, is an authorization for Atkins to begin the, the development or planning of that site. And it will include bringing in the Parks Department. It will include bringing in our Artificial Reef Program as well as the Erosion District, all the different components that we've talked about as part of the master planning process for the port because all of them have the opportunity to use some of that space there as well. So this, this begins that process. But the, but it is key and critical that we get this resol- resolution on the, on the outstanding monies on the existing Fisherman's Wharf boat ramp before we move forward because we're just, I mean, it's $700,000 that we could be utilizing towards the new boat ramp. If, if that doesn't come in, then it's a, that, 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 that puts us in a difficult position with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Tipton. Mr. Chair and board members, the reason I bring this up is because as we're going into the designing and so forth of that, you know, that comes into, it's almost like we'll need two different plans if there's not a resolution sooner rather than later in regards to the sizing of that. You know, so I think it's appropriate, and Mr. Tipton, I appreciate the fact that you've got calls into Fort Pierce, but I would hope that the board would support maybe even the chair sending a letter at this time because it isn't something that's, they're not aware of. We talked about this in our joint meeting. I brought it up then, trying to get to a resolution. I would hate to see any type of determinate, if you will, come into play as we're trying to do the master plan and so forth for that Harbor Point area. So that's, to me, is important that this one gets resolved, again, like I said, sooner rather than later.
Commissioner Zadowski. Glad to write that letter and work with Howard and staff to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zadowski.
I want to add some history to this. This property was turned over to the city, I'm going to say 2009, 10-ish. And I believe that there was a reverter clause that is usually placed in these interlocal agreements in which property is provided to a city, whether it be Port St. Lucie or Fort Pierce. And I think that it's, it's incumbent upon us because that is, that is waterfront property. We're not making it anymore. It's very valuable. It was valuable when we turned it over to the city. And I think that a, an appropriate revenue source should be acquired from that turnover if they so choose. And when I say that, I think that the developers should build the boat ramp, replace the current boat ramp with an additional slip or two and the parking associated with. It is an important boat ramp to this community. And I'll be honest with you, people come from Orlando, they come from Jacksonville because they like our waters. And that, between that and Stan Blum are probably the two most used ramps that we have. And I'm telling you what, if, if those go away without any kind of provision in advance of those going away, this community will be up in arms and they'll be with pitchforks and fire and, you know, brimstone at, at the meetings. So, but I think that there's a, a, a process by which the real value of that, that the county has and, and I believe it's in a, in a reverter clause in that document, to insist that a significant amount of funding goes to a replacement boat ramp. So I just want to make sure that that history is. I sent you an email this morning because I got a, a note about it. And I just want to make sure that you were aware or we need to do that research. So that's my two cents.
Thank you for your answer. Anyone else?
Don't send your letter until that gets confirmed, please, because I'd like to see it included.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes that I've made.
Submerge.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bartz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hutchinson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'd just like to add that two of the, two of the things that were approved was the Savannah Wet Pond Project. That item is related to the American Rescue Plan. And also the Design of Water Quality Project for a Hobpan Slough that is also related to the American Rescue Plan. Okay, we're now moving on to public hearings. And this is the final assessment resolution for culverts. Who will be taking that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Barbara Getler, MSBU Coordinator. In February 2021, the board established a voluntary program, Ordinance 21004, to which eligible property owners can apply for and receive funding to improve or repair culverts and then repay this funding through the imposition of non-adalurm special assessments against improved property collected in annual installments on the tax roll. In December 2021, the board approved Resolution 2021-421 and Initial Assessment Resolution. Today's resolution, 2022-7, is the final resolution as required by the county's ordinance. The purpose of this resolution relates to the imposition and collection of special assessments to fund stormwater culvert improvements within the culvert 2021-03 MSBU, determine that real property therein will be specially benefited, establish the method of assessing the cost of the improvements, ratify and confirm the initial assessment resolution, and approve the assessment rule. Staff recommends board approval of Resolution 2022-7. An authorization for the chair to sign documents is approved by the county attorney.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak from the public? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair, may I have approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, a second by Commissioner Zadowski. You, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you so much. Under the regular agenda, I'll turn it over to the county attorney for number A1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the board's indulgence as accepting this as a, an addition item. As the board is aware, the county has engaged Tindale Oliver to provide a technical analysis as part of the county's road impact fee study update. We discussed that at an informal this month. In that technical analysis, that company performed traffic demand modeling based on certain methodologies, assumptions, and calculations. And based on comments that we've received to date from outside entity as in sources, we believe that it would be prudent to engage a firm with transportation, planning, and traffic engineering expertise to perform an independent review of, of the Tindale Oliver modeling analysis. In that regard, we have an existing contract with S and M E. They're one of our continuing contract vendors, and I think they're actually next on the list. And they have expertise in this area. I put a copy of their resume there on your, in front of you. And they have both traffic engineering and transportation planning, and they have experience in modeling. So we're going to be asking them to perform an independent review. We want to make sure that the company that we've engaged is doing it right. If they are not, we want to know that. We want to know that before you adopt or at least consider adopting any changes to the impact fee in April. Their timeframe on this is eight to 10 weeks, which is why we needed to add it on the agenda so that we can get it done. The proposed fee is as indicated. The funding will come from impact fee administrative fees. So this will be paid from or by the fee funding source itself. Staff recommends that the board approve the January 21st, 2022 proposal by S and M E, Inc. Authorize the chair to sign a work authorization with that company as reviewed and approved by the county attorney.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Mr. McIntyre, this isn't being done because we or the staff that's been reviewing the impact fees along with Tindale, that we feel they've done anything wrong. This was brought about due to some questions from the public and/or other entities.
That's exactly right.
Right, so again, this is more to answer their questions, put it, and finally put it to rest.
It is. And we want to, we want to make sure, since their questions have been raised, we want to make sure that it is factually accurate. And again, if there are- And again, if there are issues, we'd want to know about it. We want to make sure we get it right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It just goes to show that, you know, this county has always been open and transparent about our efforts and things that we do. And it's just another example of what we do. So, I just want to say I'm in favor of this. If you're ready for a motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
If that's a motion, I'll entertain it.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski, second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we have an administration update from our P D S director.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the commission, Leslie Olson, Planning and Development Services Director, for the record, for my very last administrative approval monthly update.
We don't have a hole in the boat, people. You only have to jump ship.
So, it'll be my last time before you do this particular presentation. But still have a couple, a couple more weeks. And I'm looking forward to seeing you more, both before I leave and then after, after I leave as well. I plan on being here plenty. This month, we had two, this past month in December, we had two administrative approvals. One is for Sunset Beach. It is a single-family subdivision just south of what was known as the Atlantic. And it is a simple amendment where they are adding a gated access to their subdivision. So, we had that one. And then, we also, on the other side of the world, have United Teleports, which is off of Glades Cut Off Road, near Range Line, just to the south there. And it's a large parcel and a targeted industry. They were simply doing a lot line adjustment. But we call it a lot split because we don't have that in our code yet. That's actually coming forward in a glitch bill that we're putting forward to allow for lot line adjustments. And this just allows them a little bit more land because they had about ten pounds and a five-pound sack. So, this will help them perform their business as they desire. Those are my two items for this month. And if you have any questions, I am available.
Any questions for Leslie?
No question. I just want to say we're going to miss you. And you can always reconsider.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. It has been my honor.
You've done a marvelous job. Thank you, Leslie. B two is the K resident comprehensive plan. This is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Chair, I've only spoken with staff.
Nothing to report.
Only spoken to staff.
Myself also only spoke to staff. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Chair and Commissioners, for the record, Amy Cooper, Environmental Regulations Manager, presenting a Category One wetland waiver request on behalf of Christine Kay. The St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan classifies wetlands into three categories based on their size, location, and hydrologic connectivity to adjacent water bodies. Category One wetlands are those which are hydrologically connected to natural surface water body, are twenty acres or larger, or contain strategic habitat conservation areas. Impacts to Category One wetland or its buffer may only be approved by the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with Comprehensive Plan Policy six point one, point fourteen, point three. The subject parcel is located on South Hutchinson Island and is approximately one point three-nine acres. The parcel straddles Highway A one A and is adjacent to the Indian River Lagoon to the west, the Atlantic Ocean to the east, a vacant lot to the north, and a single-family residence to the south. The subject parcel is zoned heard with a future land use of residential urban. The surrounding properties to the north and south are also zoned heard with a future land use of residential urban. Jurisdictional determinations from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers identified approximately a quarter of an acre wetland primarily dominated by red mangroves. Due to the wetland being contiguous along A one A frontage, unavoidable impacts were required for access drive to the buildable uplands. Approximately zero point zero seven-three acres of Category One wetland will be filled and a culverted driveway access will be developed through the wetlands to allow for access to the upland area for construction of a single-family residence. The applicant reduced wetland impacts by decreasing the width of the driveway to thirty feet, installing culverts under the driveway to maintain the hydrological connection to the north and south, and utilizing the driveway as a shared driveway with the adjacent property to the north. Impacts to the wetland and the wetland buffer were offset through the purchase of point one credits from Bear Point Mitigation Bank. And any available green space on site was utilized as relocated wetland buffer. Additionally, a total of point one-nine acres of wetlands will remain unimpacted. This wetland and its associated upland buffer will be placed under a perpetual conservation easement. Per the Comprehensive Plan Policy six point one, point fourteen, point three, the board may grant a wetland waiver to impact a Category One wetland or its associated buffer when no other reasonable alternative exists and avoidance and minimization of impacts cannot otherwise be achieved. Following staff reveal, the subject waiver request made the following determinations. The proposed single-family residence is consistent with the surrounding parcels. The well and is contiguous along the frontage of the parcel, and therefore, unavoidable impacts are required to access the buildable upland. The applicant reduced wetland impacts by decreasing the width of the driveway to no greater than thirty feet in width, installing culverts under the driveway to maintain the hydrological connection to the north and south and utilizing the driveway as a shared driveway with the adjacent property to the north. Lastly, impacts of the wetland and its associated buffer are offset through the purchase of point one credits from the Bear Point Mitigation Bank. And any available green space on site was utilized as relocated wetland buffer. Staff recommends approval of the subject wetland waiver request to the Board of County Commissioners. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions of Amy?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question. I just wanted to recognize that the hydrological connection that you were able to achieve is incredibly important for that particular wetland and how it stays together. Very important. Now, I get a little heartburn whenever I go through wetland waivers and things of that nature. But you brought up the Bear Point Mitigation Bank, and I haven't had this conversation with you and the board members. I've had some with staff. But there's a proper, we're running out of mitigation opportunities, right, of the bank. And I just want to start the conversation. I've had, like I said, preliminary conversations with staff and mosquito control. The possibility of increasing the wetland, or should say, Bear Point Mitigation Bank to the north. There's an area up there that is platted and really can't build on it. It's in the, it's in the tidal zone, a lot of mangroves and things of that nature. Can't put a utility on it. Couldn't put a septic tank on the property because it's, again, it's tidal flow. And so, it would be incredibly problematic. So, some of the ideas that have been floated to try and deal with that issue is to have the county ultimately secure those properties. It won't be as valuable as some of those folks have purchased in the past. But it would give us an opportunity to expand the mitigation bank and then actually receive those funds to maintain those properties in perpetuity as basically preserve or as wetlands. So, I just want to raise that to your, to your attention, maybe have your own conversations with staff on that. I know that there's some pushback on, on the idea of increasing mosquito control components because of cost. But we've got to do something with that situation over there. More than one property owner has come to me regarding not being able to build. And there's federal money put aside for that area for the utilities. But they can't go in there because of the cover zone and so on. So, anyway, I just want to raise it to your attention because we're going to continue to have those folks come to us. At least, at least one individual has probably went to twelve different staff members trying to find an answer that is acceptable. And the answer is always going to be, sorry, can't do that because we can't do that. So, I just want to raise it to your attention. But I appreciate the work on this and being able to maintain the mitigation component, but also the hydrological connection, I think is incredibly important.
Thank you, Amy. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We'll motion in a second. A motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, a second by Commissioner Bartz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Before we get to announcements, I'd just like to congratulate, congratulate, congratulate blah, blah, blah. Patrick Diane will now be the head of Public Works. And Don, we're going to miss you. You've done a lot of work for a lot of years. And it's been a pleasure to work with you. And Patrick, we look forward to working with you also. And with that, announcements.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we do have an informal meeting at one o'clock today here in these chambers. And then, our next regular meeting will be a night meeting on February first at six P M. here in these chambers.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.